Okay. Hopefully you can all see. Maybe just minimize that. Yeah, okay. Alright. Okay, so everyone can hear me and see the slides?
Yes.
Okay, alright, good. Okay, so the topic of tonight's meeting is the coming of the Antichrist reign. And this is particularly important to us because the Bible shows us, the Bible has, is God's word and it is very accurate as you'll see. And God wants, does not want us to be ignorant about what's going to happen in the future. Because he doesn't want us to be caught off guard. And given the, the things that he wants to show us and the things that are happening, there's a certain response we need to have. And we'll talk about that, what we should do, what, what the reaction of us as human beings need to be. And especially as Christians. And the, there's a verse here in the beginning, the title slide, it shows, it says, "Little children, it is the last hour." And as you have heard that the Antichrist is coming, even now many Antichrists have come, by which we know that it is the last hour. So the Apostle John here specifically says that the Antichrist is coming. And we'll talk a bit about who that is. Or what that represents, or what it means. And let's look at some verses in the Bible. And like I said, there's a lot of material to cover today. And I hope that all of you keep an open mind and open heart about the things that I'm going to talk about because some of it is, I'm sure it'll be very new for some of you. So do your best to follow along. So first of all, we'll start off with some verses in the Bible. And the, the key here, the main point here is that we need to watch and pray. Matthew 24, verse 36, it says, the, and this is Jesus speaking, he says, "But of that day and hour no one knows, not even the angels of heaven, but my Father only." And I quoted this verse because people, some people, Christians, don't like to talk about the end times because they say, well, Jesus said, "Nobody knows the day or the hour." So we don't need to know, we just, let's just love Jesus and, and live our life and, you know, when he comes, he comes and, and that's it. And, uh, you know, people love to quote this verse. Whenever you talk to them about the Lord's coming, they always say this, "Nobody knows, nobody knows." So why do we need to know? But the interesting thing is if you just read around those verses in the same chapter, right after that, in verse 42, it says, "Watch therefore, for you do not know what hour your Lord is coming." So the Lord says to watch, but if, so if we don't need to know, then what are we watching? And how do we know, what are we looking for? So to watch means we need to be aware, we need to look, we need to be alert about what's going on around us. Uh, and also, uh, verse, Matthew 24, verses 32 and 33, he also mentioned something about this. He says, "Learn this parable from the fig tree, when the, when its branch has already become tender and puts forth leaves, you know that summer is near." So you also, when you see all these things, know that it is near at the doors. So again, we're not supposed to be ignorant. He uses the example of the fig tree. So when you, if you look at the fig tree and you see the changes in the tree, then you know that summer is near, the season's about to change. So you're looking at signs in this tree and it tells you something is going to happen. And in the same way, he says, "So when you see all these things happening, then you know that it is near, that's his coming." Things are changing, so we should not be ignorant, we need to know what's going on. And the problem is, what happens to us is that we get so caught up in our own life, in the things that we do, our, you know, our day-to-day activities and, and all that. And we are not, we're not paying attention anymore, we're not watching because we're just so busy and consumed with, with other things in our life. And we forget to watch, pay attention. And Luke 21, verse 36, again, he says, "Watch therefore and pray always that you may be counted worthy to escape all these things that will come to pass and to stand before the Son of Man." So we're watching, and some, some of us, we may be a little further ahead and we're watching, we see that, we notice changes in the world. But we don't know what to do about it. But here in Luke 21, verse 36, it says, "We need to pray that we will be counted worthy." So there's a chance that we are not worthy to escape the things that are coming. Right? How do you know you're worthy? How do you know you'll be counted worthy to escape the things that are coming? And how do you know you'll be able to stand in front of the Son of Man, Jesus Christ, one day, when he judges us? And when we have to give an account of our lives, how do we know that we'll be able to stand confidently before him? Right? So these things are going to come, the changes are going to come in this world. And eventually he's going to come back. So that's why he wants us to pay close attention to what's happening. Because it gives us an idea of how close we are to the end. Okay, I'll give you a simple timeline, some of you have seen this before, but in this timeline, you can see where we are today. The Bible shows us, and we don't have time to get into this in detail. We, we talked about this in one of the, the previous special meetings, that there will be, um, there will be a sign that happens that to signal the signing of a peace treaty in the Middle East uh, between Israel and several other nations that signals the beginning of the final seven years of this age. And in the middle of the seven, seven years, that treaty will be broken and the Antichrist will begin his reign. And it will be a very terrible time. You know, there will be a lot of, it'll just be a time of intense suffering and persecution for Christians. And there will be natural disasters, catastrophes on the earth, just, and supernatural events, just, uh, it's an extremely terrible time. And it's called the Great Day of God's Wrath. And then after that, and the beast, the Antichrist, he's going to gather up the armies of the earth and, and, uh, go to Jerusalem to fight against it. And Christ will come at that time with his army. And he will defeat the Antichrist, the beast, throw him in the lake of fire. And then it will begin a thousand years where Christ has his throne, his kingdom on the earth. He will set up his kingdom for a thousand years on the earth. And then after the thousand years, Satan will, will rebel and he'll be thrown into the lake of fire and then, the new Jerusalem will come and the new heaven and new earth. So everything will be renewed and Christ and his saints, us, we will rule together with him over the earth for eternity. So this is a very, a very quick timeline of what's going to happen, but tonight I want to focus on this, this period. Actually, what's happening in this period? Because what's happening, the way that the Bible describes the period of the Antichrist reign, it doesn't just get there overnight. The world has to be, the, the stage has to be set for this to happen. And, and we think that it seems very likely that today, the world that we're in, it is, we're in a time where the world is being set up. The stage is being set for this to happen, for the reign of the Antichrist. And we'll see why. And this is a, a, a very important warning to us, that the time is very short. So imagine if we really do have three and a half years left or less, then what are we going to do with the short time that we have? Right? Okay, so let's continue. First of all, the Antichrist, he is known as the Lawless One, okay? Second Thessalonians, chapter two, verses three to 12, I won't go through the whole thing, but here are some main points. He's called the man of sin, the man of perdition. He is someone who opposes and exalts himself above God, he even pretends to be God. So this is also why he's called the Antichrist, he opposes Christ. The mystery of lawlessness is already at work. So in the world today, this law, the lawlessness is already starting, okay? The Lawless One will be revealed at a certain time. We don't know who he is, but one day he will appear. He could even be here already, we don't know who he is. Okay, Satan's works are behind him, they're driving him, Satan has given him his power. He uses signs, powers, deceptions, lies to deceive the whole world. And God will allow a strong delusion to come over the whole world. So many, many people will be fooled, will be deceived by him. And again, uh, the same verse that we had at the beginning, 1 John 2:18, the Antichrist is coming. Okay, it's a warning that this person is coming. Uh, if he's not, he may even be, like I said, he could be here already, we just don't know who he is yet. The Revelation 13 says that also calls him the beast from the sea. Uh, and there's a, there's another beast, but we won't get into that, the beast from the earth, but mainly this is, the Antichrist is also this beast from the sea. Sea in, in the Bible represents the nations. He is from, from the nations, so he's not a Jew, he's not a Christian. He has seven heads and 10 horns, that's figurative, obviously not literal. Power, throne, and great authority from the dragon. So Satan is the one who gives him his power, his authority. And remember, Satan does have the, the, the means to do that. Remember in Matthew four, when he tempted Jesus in the wilderness, he said to Jesus, "If you bow down and worship me, I'll give you all of these," referring to the, the kingdoms of the world. So he's able to do that. One of the heads was mortally wounded, of the, of the seven heads, healed, killed, and resurrected, and all the world marveled and followed the beast. So this beast will somehow have undergone a, the, the man somehow will have undergone a, a death, a mortal wound, and he'll be killed and resurrected. And the world will marvel at him, amazed that this person somehow is alive. He will speak great blasphemies against God. He says, uh, he'll reign for 42 months, which is three and a half years. There are some people who say that the Antichrist reigns for seven years, that's not correct at all. It clearly says here it's for 42 months. He blasphemes God, his name is tabernacle on those who dwell in heaven. So he's clearly against. He hates Christians. He makes war with them and overcomes them. And he has authority over every tribe, tongue, and nation. The whole world will worship him, those whose names were, are not written in the Book of Life. And moving on, uh, they will, the whole earth will be deceived. There will be an image to the beast. And anyone who does not worship the image is killed. Okay, so you, you are, you are required to worship this image. And whether you're small, great, rich, poor, free, or slave, if you want to buy or sell, you must receive the mark of the beast. So it doesn't matter who you are, in order to do, to buy or sell, you must have this mark. Okay, it's a requirement, you're forced to do it. And another thing, uh, some other verses, Revelation 17, it talks about how there were, there are 10 kings. They will receive authority for one hour with the beast, they're all of one mind, they're very united, and they give their power and authority to the beast. They will make war with the lamb and overcome them, for he is king of, lord of lords and king of kings. Okay, so there are 10 kings that will precede the beast and they will give their power to the beast, to the Antichrist. So what can we, what does this mean? It means these 10 kings are 10 world leaders who are united in their goals. And they will appoint a global supreme leader. This is hinted at in Daniel, chapter two, and then chapter seven. Okay, so even 2,600 years before, it was already foretold that there would be such a person, there would be 10 world rulers that appear and give their power to him. Okay? So some points that we need to pay attention to, okay? Lot, there will be lawlessness because he's the man of lawlessness. And this is lawlessness from God's perspective. In God's eyes, the, what's happening in the world is lawless. The world will think it's good, everything's fine. But not from God's perspective, and not from our perspective as Christians either. There will be lies and delusions over the whole world, there will be a great deception worldwide. The whole world will worship him and Satan and will give him authority for three and a half years. And keep in mind, this worship doesn't mean necessarily that you're falling on your knees and bowing down to him. The word worship used in Revelation is proskounio, the Greek word, it means to submit to, as to a master. You highly revere this person, you, you, you're fully submitted to this person. You revere him, you know, very, is a VIP, very important person. Okay, he will persecute and kill God's people, Jews and Christians who remain on the earth. And you cannot buy or sell unless you receive his mark. And the 10 world leaders who are united will give their, will share their authority with him and eventually come under his rule. So tho- those are the main points from the verses that we just went through. And the things that we can deduce from this is that, okay, first of all, we're, there's a, obviously one world ruler. There will be one world government with absolute power because the rules are the same everywhere. Okay, so it doesn't say in a particular country, but everywhere you go, it's, it's the same rules. So that implies there's one world government because there's one world ruler, so there has to be one government. Potentially one world currency. Because even what you buy or sell is controlled. And it's likely cashless, I don't know if this matters, but it's likely cashless because cash transactions cannot be monitored. There will be lawlessness, as I said, from God's perspective, because the Antichrist sets the law. And God is rejected, lies and delusion. And how is the whole world deluded? How are they deceived? It's through the control of media and information. And it's a well-known fact, whoever controls the information, controls the minds of the people. Right? So there will definitely be control of media and information. And this is made a lot easier today because of the internet and the instant news you can get everywhere. Propaganda is spread worldwide, this is how the world will be convinced to follow the beast. There will be worldwide compliance and social control. And that is achieved through fear and censorship of opposing views. Right? In order for everybody to follow along, anybody who opposes obviously has to be censored and silenced. And this is probably why there's such a, um, at this time, the time of the Antichrist, there are, Christians and Jews are persecuted because their views are, uh, their views are, uh, according to the, following the word of God, the Bible. And that cannot be allowed, so they have to be eliminated somehow. And the, one of the easiest ways to control people is through fear. And we'll talk about that. Christians and Jews are the enemy, spiritually Satan, the reason why Christians and Jews are the enemy spiritually speaking is because Satan is behind the Antichrist. They are, they're going to be called the bigots, the oppressors, the homophobes, they're anti-progress, brainwashed people. In the world's eyes, that's what we Christians are going to be. And you know what? That's what we are called already. So given what we know, what we've talked about, how close are we? Uh, so let's look at some, some signs here. There is one today. Uh, one of the things that needs to happen is that there has to be one world government. Okay, and we are already lead, we are already headed this, in this direction. There's something nowadays called globalism, it's a, it's a trend where the world is becoming more united and one. And a lot of the organizations in the world are, it's not, it's not as if somebody in the background is purposely arranging this. It's just happening because this is a, it happens to be an easier way to manage the world and to do business. And globalism is the opposite of nationalism, basically, okay? So nationalism involves being national pride, you know, you're proud of your country, you're proud to be a Canadian, proud to be an American, you have your national identity, your national history. Right? But globalism is opposite of that. You, you have to eliminate your national identity. You need to eliminate your national borders, your national history, even your national symbols to achieve this one world. And this is supported by international trade and multiculturalism and immigration. And the more people are spreaded, spreading around, immigrating and emigrating throughout the world, the more there's a blend, right? People are blending into each other. Trade because, you know, it's, it's easier to, to manufacture some goods in different parts of the country where it's cheaper to do business. You want to sell your products all over the world to make more money. You know, people are being called, you know, they like to call us global citizens. Right? So that thinking is already coming into place. There's, potentially there will be a united global currency today because in order to have international trade, you, it's easier if everybody's using the same currency. And today it's the US dollar, right? Whenever you're doing international trade, you, everybody agrees to use the US dollar. There's global cooperation, the G7, the G20, the United Nations, World Trade Organization, World Bank, all these different organizations here. And this one world government has, it's, it's already sort of being tested in the European Union. So a while ago, several years ago, you know, the European Union was formed, it was formed with a, a number of countries, including some of the largest economies in Europe. You know, so the German, the French, Italian, and Spanish, and Greek, their identities were reduced, right? They're reduced. They adopted a single currency, so all of their own currencies were gone, they're eliminated. And they adopted a single currency. And what happened is that there were, they began accepting millions of immigrants from Northern Africa, Middle East. And, um, anybody who opposed this was called a racist. So this, this is happening more and more, right? So it's leading us more towards this one world government. And even here in North America and even in Europe, illegal, unlawful immigration is being overlooked. Right? It's, it's part of reducing nationalism, reducing, eliminating borders, national identity. And, you know, here in North America, they're more and more eliminating national history. Right? Like if you may have heard, like here's a picture of a statue being torn down, this is like, I think this is in Richmond, Virginia, right? The, one of the Civil War generals, his statue is being torn down, they're trying to erase their history. In Canada, several cities have announced that they're cancelling Canada Day. Can you believe that? They're trying to eliminate our history. And, um, in the G7, just a couple of weeks ago, they announced a, hit a global minimum corporate tax rate. So they're already setting the stage for a global economy. So remember, in order for the Antichrist to rule, there has to be one world government, and this is already taking shape. There has to be an increase in lawlessness. This guy just walked into a he just, he just filled a garbage bin up with cosmetic, some of the bottles, and just rode his bike out. And the, the security guard, he didn't stop him, he just videoed him on his phone. And they just, he just left. There's no enforcement of the law, people can just do what they want. In the news, they said, "Oh, this guy was probably just poor, he needed the money." So does that mean if I'm poor, I can break the law? I can steal? Right? And this is one of the things the Lord Jesus predicted, that during the, the time of the end, lawlessness will abound. And the love of many will grow cold. Or lawlessness will abound. And again, the Lawless One is coming. And I showed some examples, like here is a, a police car, people are even brave enough to burn a police car. This happened during riots last year. You know, the, nowadays, the LGBT movement is so, uh, it's lawlessness in God's eyes. But this has become so, there, it's something that people are proud of now, you know? Downtown Toronto, we have these, uh, all, I think even up here, right, in shopping malls, they have all gender bathrooms, you can go to, you, you don't have, uh, women's bathrooms and men's bathrooms, but now you can, men can go into the women's bathrooms and women can go into the men's bathrooms and it's just a mess. And I put these, the, the Canadian Houses of Parliament and, uh, and, uh, the Capitol Building in the US, because there's lawlessness even among the politicians, they can do things, break the law, they get away with it. You know, corruption, they get away with it. And you know, today there's such a thing called social justice. So it doesn't matter, justice is not, um, you know, justice is, is not, uh, as emphasized anymore. It's becoming less important because it's not so much about the right and the wrong according to the law. But now they consider things like the social status of the person. Okay, this person who robbed the store, was he poor? Maybe he had a reason. Maybe his background, maybe his race, so you know, if he, his race is a certain type, then it's okay, he's oppressed, he's allowed to do these things. Right? And even in Exodus 23, in the Bible, the Lord told us, "Commanded his people, there shall be no partiality when you judge for the poor, no partiality." You judge whatever is right, whatever is right is right, wrong is wrong. But the world is becoming more lawless because of social justice. Okay? Censorship, there is increasing censorship, you know, in Canada, we have, you know, the government just passed a bill to censor whatever they don't like on the internet. You know, you can see here examples in Twitter and Facebook and Google. If they don't like what you say, if they don't like certain political, uh, speech, they will cancel it, they'll shut it down. See, even here, Facebook and YouTube, they banned videos of doctors talking about COVID. They were silenced, the doctors were silenced, and YouTube and, uh, Facebook banned the video. Not allowed to talk about it. Fact-checkers, right? They don't, some news that, that doesn't go along with the narrative, they will fact-check it to make it as, as if, uh, these, they know the facts, right? The news reporters know the facts, you people are wrong, so they'll censor it. But here you can see that even the fact-checkers were debunked. You know, and here I, a recent example, a, a pro-democracy newspaper in Hong Kong was shut down. Right? You can't speak anything that is contrary to what the government wants you to speak. So this is happening, this is how they, how people become unified in their thinking, they're, they can't, they don't, they're not allowed to see other views. They're, they can't, they don't, they're not allowed to see other views or think in different ways. Their, their views are focused where the government wants them to think because any opposing views are censored. So this is something that will be increasing. And in particular, related to COVID nineteen and how does it relate to the, the time of the beast, the Antichrist? You have to realize that what is going on now is very possibly um, so what, what's happening now is that we are being conditioned to obey the government without question. Right? We are being, meaning we are being mentally prepared to accept whatever we're being told. Because one day when the beast comes and he tells you, you have to follow me, you have to obey me and you need to receive my mark in order to buy or sell, we're just gonna say, okay, because we're so used to doing it. Right? We will be, today is setting the stage by, through this conditioning to obey and submit to the, to the government. We are one day going to be conditioned to obey the Antichrist who one day will be the government. And how is this happening? It's using fear as the conditioning agent. Okay, the, right now there's a global threat. So there's a threat, there's a, the SARS COVID, uh SARS COV two virus. Okay, that's what's going around. There's a messaging, the message that's being put out to the public around the world is fear, imminent suffering and death. News shows people dying everywhere. And this happened even in, during SARS one, the news show people dying everywhere. You know, there, people even called us from, during that time, people called us from uh other countries and said, are you guys okay? You know, are people dying everywhere in Toronto? I said, no, we're just fine. But that's, that's how it is, right? Everybody thinks that. And I just, I just want to, again, please keep an open mind, okay? Just hear me out. Um, this is a, these are some, this is data that was collected from forty-five countries as of the end of November twentieth to look at the, analyze the, by age group, the rate of death, the infection fatality rate by age group. And it was, so if you look at from zero to thirty-nine years old, the fatality, the mean fatality rate is point zero four percent. It's incredibly tiny. But the, the, the information in the news that we hear, it leads us to believe if you step outside, you're gonna catch it and die. Right? It's so scary, it's in your face, it's in the news all the time. But it, but if you look at the statistics, you see it's not like that at all. But, so if you have this messaging of fear everywhere, who can save us? Well, it has to be the government, the government has the way to save us. And how do they save us? It's due our compliance and submission. You must obey us if you want to survive. Okay, if you want everybody to survive. There's no questioning, you cannot question the narrative, the methods or the policies. They use lockdowns to restrict what you can do, restrictions on daily activities, even uh around the world, the stopping of in church, uh in-person church meetings as we're still facing today. Mask wearing as an outward symbol of submission. Mandatory, I quote, I put in quote mandatory vaccinations as a prerequisite for normalcy. They make it, they make you have to do something in order to get your life back. Right? And I'm not, I'm not going to, tonight I don't want to talk about the pros, the, whether the vaccine is good or bad, that's not the point here, okay? But the point is that we are not, our right to choose what we want to do is being taken away. And it's being, we're being manipulated with messaging and fear. Okay? Okay? So uh the majority of the population willfully accepts without questioning what they are being told, despite the inconsistency of the messaging, non-scientific policies and censorship of differing opinions. Have you noticed that some of the rules that are being put in place just don't make any sense? The policies don't make sense, they're not based on science, new research or statistics. Uh, the news that emphasize cases, you, you notice you almost never hear about people recovering or the rate of death, you only, because the big numbers work better. And I don't think they're purposely trying to scare us, but it makes people read the news. It draws people to watch it and that means more revenue for the news organizations. Uh, restrictions that override constitu- constitutional rights. My rights of free speech, freedom of religion and freedom of movement is being restricted. Right? Um, heavy-handed enforcement, there were people who got massive tickets just for sitting on a park bench last year, right? Or just going outside for a walk. Uh, there were people that were uh, and especially on Christian gatherings. And I'll get to that. There's inconsistent enforcement, riots, politicians can dine. You know, they can go to restaurants, these politicians and they were caught doing it. That's okay, they, they, they'll apologize, but nothing happens to them. But Christians cannot gather. There's a censorship of differing opinions and views, including from doctors and scientists, including the inventor of the mRNA vaccine technology himself. He actually uh had some, some articles that he wanted to, and some interviews that he gave to, to talk about what's going on with the vaccine, he was censored. He was not allowed to speak. So what, why is this? It's very, it's very strange how there's, and people notice something may be off, but they don't, but they still go along with it. And there is an increasing amount of government control and suppression. And it's for health reasons. Here in Ontario, we had some, just illustrating some of the strange rules we had. You know, we could not buy underwear, underwear is non-essential. You could buy food, but you can't buy the things that you need to prepare the food. You can get haircut, you cannot get haircuts, but you can get a haircut for your dog. Right? Just strange things like that. Um, you can, you can't buy children's toys, but you can buy toys for your pets. Right? It's just very weird. Okay, and uh, you know, more suppression, a doctor who shared his vaccine concerns saying he's facing workplace harassment, right? Normally in, in science, you're, you know, a scientist may have a, a certain study or research, they put it out. And if there are, and it gets reviewed by other scientists and researchers. And if there are, and they, they work together to go back and forth to correct, to, to confirm or you know, to come to something that benefits everybody, right? But in this case, there is no, there is no allowance for anything that is opposing to the, the broader uh agenda or narrative. And even, even uh here, the, this is a, a, a posting I found, a news article is these children are crying as their father, who's a church pastor, was being arrested from his home because he held a worship service. And they, his, the church building that he was uh using, I think this one was, it was, uh, if it wasn't him, it was somebody's, was uh triple gated. It was fenced with three layers around and there were police watching to stop them from, from meeting. So they went, they, they secretly held their meetings in a place and a police helicopter found them, they actually used a police helicopter to try to find them. That's, that's how ridiculous and, and uh serious it is. Why are they going so, uh, they're, they're just going uh, you know, very hard against um this. You know, and here's another example. The Calgary Police arrested this pastor following his church service. But church meetings are not okay, but protesting Israel is okay. And this was hap, this was during a similar time, May, this was May eighth, this is May fifteenth. This is downtown Toronto, you look at all these people, they're protesting against Israel. And note that the maximum outdoor gathering limit was, is ten. You're only allowed to have ten, but somehow that's okay. But if you hold a church service, you get arrested. Something is not right and this should make people question what is going on here. Um, you know, again, there's showing that there is, uh, you know, they're not following science. There, it's been shown that, you know, you have, uh, you can develop natural, long-lasting immunity from, if you've caught the virus before. But they don't take that into account uh in their, uh, in their, in these travel restrictions, for example. Right? In Germany, here was an article I was sent that showed you can even, now you need a wristband, a digital wristband to go shopping. And that mirrors, that is very similar to what we see happening with the mark of the beast. Okay, there's public shaming, for example. These are articles from major news organizations that say if you, that we should name and shame the vaccine myth peddlers, we should start shunning them. Right? Shame on you. So not only is it government restrictions, government rules, but the public, but people will be pressured, right? Pressure shamed, even to induce compliance, you're forced to comply from family, coworkers, government media. So I want to emphasize, so this is not about following the science anymore. Because if they did, they would consider your natural immunity. Right? They would also consider that, you know, uh, children and young people are very unlikely to, to die from the disease. But they don't, it's, they're not following the science. So, so what is going on here? So the vaccine, I want to emphasize, I've had some people ask about this. The vaccine is not the mark of the beast. But our current environment is preconditioning people to accept government imposed restrictions on basic rights. And so this is not about preventing a disease anymore, it's more about compliance and submission, and this is one of the things that will need to take place when the beast, when the Antichrist is ruling. Because you cannot oppose him, you cannot disagree with him. And even the public, your friends and family will be against you if you disagree. So this stage, as you can see, the stage is being set, the conditioning of our thinking is starting to happen. Is becoming normalized. Uh, one other point, I, I gotta, uh, I've got a few more slides to go through. Uh, another point is this, uh, something happening in the world. It was um, it's an init, an initiative that started uh last year, that was introduced last year. And it's called the Great Reset of twenty thirty. And this is initiated, this was started by this man, this professor, a German professor. And he said, uh, during the last year's Davos uh World Economic Forum Summit, he said, "The pandemic represents a rare but narrow window of opportunity to reflect, reimagine and reset our world." So they want to, they're thinking of resetting our world, completely changing it. And this is one of the, this is taken from a video that talks about the Great Reset from the World Economic Forum, and one of the points is you will own nothing and you'll be happy. And the thinking behind that is that the reason why there's suffering in this world and inequality and oppression is because there are rich people who have accumulated a lot of wealth, there are poor people that have nothing. And so the idea is if you don't own anything, then there won't be rich and poor, there won't be these differences anymore and everybody will be happy. So the, one of the ways they want to achieve this is that all products will become services, I don't own anything, I don't own a car, I don't own a house, I don't own any appliances or any clothes. So imagine this, you don't own anything. And this is one of the, one of the uh, the goals they want to reach by twenty thirty to, to reset this world. So the question is then what happens to the things I own now? My money, my home, my car, my clothes, what are they gonna do with it? Are they gonna take it away? Um, how do they enforce it? So this will require, this will basically force complete world government dependence on everything I have, everything I, I need to live, I need to rent it from the government. Total dependence, right? So um, that's something that, one of the things that they want to implement and use COVID, because then one of the reasons why they're referencing COVID is because they saw when this pandemic hit, how quickly people adapted to it, to the changes. So they think, well, then you should, we should be able to quickly change to reset the world. And the whole, everybody is on board with this, they want to build back better. Right? This is the, the catchphrase now that they're all using, we must reinvent capitalism. And, and here's Joe Biden, when he was campaigning, he was, his phrase was everywhere, build back better. Here's uh Boris Johnson, he's talking, this was just from two weeks ago, saying that we need to build back better. I don't think I have time to play this, maybe I have, it's very short, let me see.
To be sure that we're beating the pandemic together and discussing how we'll never
Okay, never mind, never mind, it's okay. Yeah, basically he's saying that we need to build back better and build back greener, build back gender neutral and, and oh yeah, I don't know, okay. And this is Trudeau saying the same thing, they're all, it's like they're all reading the same book. And what does this have to do with anything? Well, the Great Reset, one of the, one of the points about the Great Reset is they want to, they want to eliminate US dominance over the world and to have a handful of global powers. And remember, one of the things that's going to happen before the reign of the Antichrist is the emergence of these ten kings. So, so it's the power of, of the world is not constant, not mainly in US, in, in the US dominating, but it will be distributed over ten kings and eventually these ten kings will hand, they'll be of one mind. And just like you saw earlier, these politicians are all of one mind, they all want to bring about this Great Reset. And eventually they will give their power and authority to the beast. So they want, so even today you can already see there is, there is an effort to bring US dominance to an end. The, the United States is incredibly divided right now, the people are very divided. There's an obsession over race and gender resulting in intense social divisions. There is mass illegal immigration, weakening of the military and economic decline. So you can see here, there's been a lot of things going on in, in, in the US. And one of the objectives, I believe, is to bring this to pass, to bring US dominance to an end. Right? And I don't think they, they obviously don't know about this verse, but it looks very much like it's setting the stage for that to happen as well. And even the agenda of the Great Reset is affecting us right now. One of them is due to help the climate, is that we need to eat much less meat. And if you've noticed, because you know, some of us, we do grocery shopping, we see that, if you've noticed, meat prices have gone up a lot. And it's not by accident that they've gone up. Because, it's because in many of the world's um large economy is, economies, they are trying to bring about this change in this world, this Great Reset. And they want to, and this is just a small example. During the reign of the beast, also Christians and Jews are the enemy. And we can see this happening already today. And this was just, again, during that uh um anti-Israel uh protest that happened in May. So there were Jewish people, you know, there was a big mob of people uh protesting against Israel in support of, in support of the Palestinians. And you saw here that, and Jewish people came to support Israel and many of them got assaulted. And here is an example, right? They said a Jewish man was beaten up by pro-Palestinian protesters in Toronto. And this is just, this is uh something I found, it's uh in Chicago, this march in support of the LGBT. And uh, it's happening tomorrow, actually. And you can see here in the picture, they're burning a Israeli flag and a American flag on And you can see here in the picture, they're burning a Israeli flag and a American flag on top. And the lady is standing on top of a burning police car. Right? This is the sort of thing that people are advocating now, right? Burning the flag of Israel. So where did this come from? Why do they hate Israel so much? And um, well, the answer is because Satan is behind it. And not too long ago, there was a, an older man preaching on the street in London. And he was actually roughed up, they pushed him around. And it wasn't the, just the public push, it was the police that pushed them around, right? He wasn't doing anything wrong, he was just preaching about biblical marriage. And this is, so you can see how Jews and Christians will become the enemy. It's already taking place today. You know, this is not in um, uh, you know, Middle Eastern country, this is here. And these are in mainstream publications in the Atlantic. Their Christians are considered a problem, right? Our Christian, conservative Christians, religious extremists. Um, new data shows that most Americans consider the beliefs and practices of traditional Christians to be extreme. And according, and here, being religiously extreme is a threat to society, which means that many Americans now believe that Christians who advocate for sexual abstinence or value missions work over money constitute a social threat. So, you know, uh, this, this attitude is just being, this sort of thing is being uh spoken openly now. Here's another one from ABC News. It says, "When it comes to conspiracy theories, is Christianity part of the problem or part of the solution?" Well, you know, when they ask a question like that, they mean that it's a problem. So Christians are are prone to conspiracy theories, in other words, so. Um, and here's another one. "The agenda of the Christian right can be summed up essentially as promoting the idea of Christian nationalism in which the establishment of Judeo-Christian values is the foundation of the country's law." In other words, these Christians want to impose their beliefs on the government and on the law and how the law is, uh, how the country is run. And the people who, um, non-belie, non-Christians, especially people who are um atheist, they find this a very threatening idea, that these Christians are going to change the, they're going to influence the the country that we live in. Why, and why, and there, this, the writer here is wondering, why the need for this social transformation? "The end is dominion, the establishment of God's kingdom on earth. It is the fulfillment of Jesus' prayer, 'Your kingdom come, your will be done on earth as it is in heaven.'" And to us, that's a wonderful thing. We want the Lord to establish His kingdom on earth, and we want to help Him do that. But to these people, they think, wow, these people are nuts. These crazy people, they want to, they want to influence our, our laws and our government, in our society based on something ridiculous as this. So of course, they see us as a threat and a problem. But for us, this is real, this is what we want. We want the Lord to bring His kingdom here. And here's one in Rolling Stone Magazine, you know, there are people were, they're making fun of Trump because he had these Christian uh leaders praying for him. To us, it's good. I mean, I wish this would happen in Canada, where Christians come together to pray for the the leaders. You know, but here, they think it's crazy. The the caption says, "The fundamentalist Christians who believe in the apocalyptic myth of the rapture." So the rapture, the coming of the Lord is a myth. These crazy people, look at what they're doing, right? Uh, whether Trump gets another term or not, Amer, American can expect the myth of the rapture to continue to influence US um policy, the myth of the rapture. Right? To them, it's all myth, it's fake, it's craziness, it's fairy tales. And you're allowing these people who believe in fairy tales to influence us, our government. Uh, and here, in the Washington Post, "Half of evangelicals or Christians support Israel because they believe it is important for fulfilling end times prophecy," which they also don't believe. Right? They don't believe that, that there is, that God will fulfill the prophecies that he spoke about the end times. So this is a scary thing to them. So no wonder they, they want Christians out of here. They don't want us around to um, uh, to say anything, right? To influence them. So now that we see that these things are happening, what do we do? And um, we have to realize, just a, just a few more slides, um, that only, according to what the Bible says, only mature Christians will be raptured, taken, right? So before the coming of the Antichrist, Christians who are matured and faithful will be taken. They will be, uh, they will, and just like the Lord said, "That we will be kept from the hour of trial in Revelation three. We will be worthy to escape the coming tribulation," like the verse that we read in the beginning in Luke twenty-one. So it is possible to escape the time of the Antichrist. But in order to escape, we must be matured, we have to be faithful, we have to, we have to allow God, the Lord, to work in our lives, to point out the things where we are still falling short. We need to let go of our love for the world, we need to obey Him, we need to fear Him. And that's what tomorrow's meeting is about, right? To fear the Lord, right? And um, you know, we really have to put Him first, we cannot, we, you know, and more and more, as we see the world changing, we have to be more bold to stand for Him and stand for the truth and not be afraid of what people think of us. Because you can, you saw how the world is beginning to think of us as crazy. And they're, they're becoming more uh bold to oppose us, right? And so what are we gonna do when we're faced with these pressures, right? Are we going to just allow it to happen, or are we going to stand up against it? And all the, and also, as the time gets closer, Satan will work harder to try to stumble us, to cause us to fall, to draw us away after other things, right? To take our focus. And like we said at the beginning, the Lord commanded us to watch. Satan's going to find ways to keep us, to stop us from watching, right? So, and there's a common um, wrong thinking, that there, that all Christians will be taken. But that is absolutely wrong, right? There will be Christians left behind during the time of the Antichrist, because it says here, the dragon, for example, in this verse, Revelation twelve seventeen, "He made war with the rest of her offspring," referring to the woman, and we don't have time to get into that. But here it says, "The Antichrist made war with the saints, the Christians, and to overcome them." So if everybody were, was taken, and there were no Christians left, then how would this happen? And so definitely, there are Christians left behind. And in order for us, and if we are left behind, the only way for us to to escape it, to get out of it is to be beheaded. Because it says here that these people, these Christians were beheaded at the end of, at Revelation twenty, "They were beheaded for their witness to Jesus and for the word of God, who had not worshipped the beast or His image, and had not received His mark on their foreheads or on their hands." So that means that these people, these Christians, were able to withstand the intense pressure to comply and to submit to the beast, and they did not. And they even gave up their life for it, their physical life. Today, that's what I'm saying, that today we are already facing increasing pressure to comply, to submit to what the government demands from us, even if it's wrong. And we have, and we're facing pressure from family, from coworkers, uh, from people around us to follow what uh, what they want us to do, right? Or follow what they want us to believe, or to take up their values, their way of seeing things, which are contrary to the word of God. Okay, so we Christians, we need to know the goal of our Christian life and not to be deceived. And like I said, we have to, in these verses in Luke twenty-one, again, it, the Lord said to take heed to ourselves. We have to pay attention, what is your Christian life like now? What is your condition? Because you, your heart could be weighed down with different things. Here it says, "Corousing, drunkenness, cares of this life." We may not have carousing and drunkenness, but we all have cares of our life, and they can weigh us down. And if we get weighed down, we get distracted, then this day, the day of the, of judgment, God's judgment, when the Antichrist is ruling, it will come on us unexpectedly. And it will come as a snare to all those who dwell on the face of the whole earth. It's going to, it's going to deceive everybody, everybody will cut, be, um, it'll catch everybody. So again, watch and pray that you are counted worthy to escape all these things that will come to pass and to stand before the Son of Man, because again, we will be standing in front of Him to give an account of our lives. And this is the time right now, with all the things that are happening in the world, we need to take heed. We need to hear the warnings and act. And so he says here, "To him who overcomes, I will grant to sit with me on my throne, as I also overcame and sat down with my father on his throne." I want to be someone who overcomes, right? I don't want to be someone who just wilts at any kind of pressure. I want to overcome myself, my own uh unfaithfulness, my own sin, my own, you know, challenges and and distractions. I want to give myself for Christ and His church, because one day, there's a reward. So I can, so that we gain this reward to sit with Him on His throne, to rule together with Him, because remember, He wants to bring His kingdom back. And He wants us to have a place in, together with Him, to reign with Him in His kingdom, but only if we are qualified, only if we overcome today. And this is another warning, that if you want to save your life today, you want to live in comfort, you want to live in, you want to enjoy the world, you want to do whatever you like. You don't want to make any sacrifices for God, then you will lose it. You will lose everything. But if you are willing to lose your life today for Christ, give up your life, give up yourself for Him, you will find it. That's the warning, right? So the time is very short, we need to, we need to take heed. And I think everybody can tell that twenty twenty was a very weird year. It was very unusual, and it's still unusual. And I, and I believe it will get even weirder, very strange, right? And we have to see, we have to pay attention to what is going on out there, okay? If you are not a Christian yet, only Jesus can deliver us from what's coming. I understand that some of the things I talked about may seem a little far-fetched to you. But we, but you have to realize that everything that the Bible has predicted that would happen in this world has happened. Everything has taken place. So we have to believe that what will take place in our future will also take place, right? Um, and if we, uh, whether we believe or not, the things that we are talking about, it will come. But only Jesus can deliver us from that. Like it says here in First Thessalonians one, verse ten, "Jesus is the one who delivers us from the wrath to come." And Mark sixteen, verse sixteen, it says, "He who believes and is baptized will be saved, but he who does not believe will be condemned." That is, that is a warning to us also. We must, we need to believe Him, but He gives us the choice today. You know, what choice are we going to make? And hopefully, the choice is to believe in Jesus and receive Him into your heart, right? Because He's the only one that can save us and deliver us. Uh, so, that's it. You can contact us here at this, oh, our pictures aren't working. Facebook, YouTube, we're here, our physical address and our email. So uh, that's it for tonight. Hopefully, that was helpful to everybody. What is this? Okay. Um, so tomorrow, we will continue with our next topic, which is the um, the fear of God, to fear our loving God. And this is something uh absolutely crucial in our Christian life. Because the prevailing message today among Christians is, is just love and grace. But there is a lack of fear of God, and we'll, we'll see why that is so important to us. Okay, so that's tomorrow at eight o'clock. Okay, so hopefully, we'll see all of you tomorrow. Okay? All right. Okay, praise the Lord.